Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome, and welcome to, to members of the public up there. The usual housekeeping things. Firstly, there is no plan for a fire alarm test this evening, so if you hear a continuously ringing bell, it probably means that there could be a fire somewhere in the building, and we should leave it as quickly as we can. By the green marked text, it's there, there, and on my right here. And we congregate underneath the canopy outside Waitrose. Members, and members of the public, please, could you make sure that your mobile phones are switched to silent or switched off? And members, we are being webcast. Can we be sure that we've got our cards fully plugged in and speak into the microphone as well? Just briefly, ladies and gentlemen up there, could I remind you that this is a meeting held in public? It is not a public meeting. So it would be inappropriate for applause, or indeed the opposite, whilst members are speaking, and it does just delay proceedings. Moving on then, members. Item one on the agenda, the minutes of our meeting held on the 18th of February, they've been on the table over there for the last half hour or more. Is it a wish that I sign them as a correct record? Thank you very much, I shall do that later, Emma. Apologies for absence and declarations of substitutes.
I have apologies for absence from councillors Michael Goodridge, Julia Potts, Diane James, Mary Forzessky, Stuart Stennett and Stephen Reynolds. Councillors Carol Coburn and Elliot Nichols are attending as subs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Declarations of interest?
Before the meeting, I've had a non-perunary interest in the application from councillor Chris Storey, as he knows the external affairs manager at the site. Thank you.
Any other late declarations, members? No? Moving on then. Questions by members of the public?
None received, chairman.
Thank you. We move on then to the application for planning permission. Douglasway 2015 stroke 0075, the erection of educational and office buildings, ancillary residential accommodation and mosque following the demolition of existing buildings, provision of improved landscaping and drainage system as amended by plans received on the 5th of March 2015 and amplified by plans and emails received on the 26th of February, the 5th of February and the 18th of March 2015 at Islamabad Sheep Hatch Lane, Tilford.
Thank you, chairman. The key issues for this application are the Green Belt considerations, any impact upon the AONB and AGLV, transport and access, and the case for very special circumstances. The application site is located to the south of Sheep Hatch Lane, which runs along the top of this plan here. The existing lawful use of the site is as a religious and educational centre. The existing buildings on the site down here were originally built in the 1930s as a camp school. The existing buildings on the site are generally in quite poor condition. And the site contains a number of different uses, including predominantly residential, ancillary residential accommodation in this area to the west here, together with guest accommodation, officers, a printing press and a mosque located on the eastern part of the site. I'll just take you through a few photographs and plans to show you the proposals. This is the view taken from the north on Sheep Hatch Lane, looking through the post and wire fencing. As you can see, you can just see the top of the northernmost buildings there with the intervening playing field that would remain as is. This is just to give you an idea of the scale and condition of some of the existing buildings. These are blocks 2, 5 and 5B. This is a picture of some of the buildings within the centre of the site. There is an open space here, which you can see is used informally for parking at the moment. And again, some more of the existing buildings. This building here currently contains officers. And here we have the back of some of the residential blocks on the western portion of the site. They are built into the contours of the site, so they have some sort of basement storage areas here. They're all generally of a timber, simple construction such as this. As mentioned, the existing arrangements on site, predominantly the residential accommodation, coloured pink on this plan is contained to the west, but as you can see, there is a smattering of residential accommodation throughout this portion of the site as well. No change of use would occur as a result of the proposals, but there would be a redistribution of some of the existing lawful uses. The uses would be rationalised and tidied up across the site. This side would be wholly ancillary residential accommodation. And the eastern part of the site would be the more communal facilities, including the dark pink building here, which would be new guest accommodation, the yellow circular building here, which would be a replacement mosque, and a new multipurpose assembly hall down at the bottom here. There would also be a formalisation of parking here adjacent to the existing sports court, which would be retained. These are just some typical elevations of the existing residential blocks. The replacement buildings, which you can see here, would be of a similar scale, albeit there would be an increase in floor space predominantly achieved through the use of first-floor accommodation within the roof voids. There'd be no increase in the number of residential properties proposed. It would remain at 33. And the properties would be controlled to be used by members of the association only, ancillary to the main use of the site. Show you the floor plans briefly for those buildings. These are the existing buildings, which contain the administration blocks in the centre of the eastern portion of the site. As you can see, they're organised in this rough configuration here. These buildings in this position would be replaced with the proposed guest accommodation. As you can see, it would be spread over two floors, again making use of the roof areas of the building. This is the existing block one, which contains the site's mosque. As you can see, it's a low-profile timber building, fairly indistinguishable from the other buildings on the site. The replacement building in this position would be for a slightly different use. It would be for religious education. The same for block S, which is adjacent to the previous block. Currently, that's used as residential accommodation. The residential accommodation in that block would be subsumed into the new residential accommodation on the west. And again, it would be replaced with further teaching facilities on the site. Block M is currently used as residential accommodation. It's located over on the eastern part of the site, and it's somewhat isolated from the majority of the residential accommodation on there. That building, along with the existing buildings that provide catering facilities, would be replaced with the proposed mosque and assembly hall. As you can see, the mosque would take a contemporary design. It would also feature the minarets, which would not be functional as such. They would be controlled in terms of public address. It wouldn't be possible to climb inside them or anything like that. They are symbolic more than functional. These are the elevations here of the proposed multipurpose sports hall. As you can see, it would be again fairly contemporary building in the local vernacular timber style with a green roof to minimise its visual impact. This is the view of the south of the Assembly Hall. So this is the view for members who attended the site visit. This would be the view from the stables down at the bottom of the site. There's currently some stabling and paddocks that would remain as is. And this would be the view of the back of the multipurpose hall from that position. As you can see, the mosque would take a traditional male and female entrance, and it would be circular. The Assembly Hall would have a large multipurpose hall facility along with a small gym and changing facilities. The site does benefit from equestrian facilities. It has a sports field and is used by members of the association as well as members of the wider community. Finally, blocks 6A, 6 and 6B, which is in the centre of the site to the north of the existing open space, would be replaced with a building of similar proportions and the association's printing facilities would be rehoused in that building. If I can just draw your attention to the printed update sheet before you, before we go on to the determining issues. There are a number of points to note. Firstly, the heads of terms have been updated to include restriction on the occupation of the residential units on site to ensure that they remain ancillary to the religious and educational use and cannot be sold off separately. In addition, if members are minded to agree with officers this evening and recommend approval for the application, the decision would need to be referred to the Secretary of State through the call-in process. Since the preparation of the agenda, the applicant has provided an addendum to the transport assessment just setting out the number of likely trips to and from the site. Officers are satisfied that there would not be a material increase in traffic movements over and above what could be achieved lawfully on the existing site. The County Highway Authority's comments have also been received and confirm that point. In the written update, there are two additional letters of representation raising objection and one expressing support. As you can see from the officer's response, officers are satisfied with regards to the infrastructure and the visual impact of the building. Building nine, which is referred to in the letter, would remain the same and be refurbished, so there's no plans to replace that building. There is an additional letter, which has been received since the update, which raises several points. The use of the minarets, as I've said, they would not be used. They would be more symbolic than functional. And there is a condition recommended with regards to systems of public address on the site to ensure minimisation of any noise. The transport assessment, I've covered that, has been addressed as part of the written update. And finally, it raises issues of parking. As members who attended the site visit will know, parking on site is at the moment not formalised, and there is a need for visitor parking on the site. The application seeks to rationalise that situation. There are two additional conditions recommended in the update sheet from the County Highway Authority just with regards to parking and a construction transport management plan. Moving on to the determining issues for members this evening. The matters of principal and technical judgment. The site has a lawful sui generis use for education and religious purposes with a number of ancillary and supporting uses, including the residential units. This use currently is unfettered. There's no control over that use and the intensity of that use. The applicants have prepared a transport assessment, which the County Highway Authority has reviewed and is satisfied that the proposals would not result in a material increase in vehicular movements such that the proposals would adversely affect highway safety and capacity. The site would not result in a permanent increase in residents and would not have a material impact upon the SPA. Similarly, with regards to flood risk, the proposals would not result in an increase in flood risk on the site or elsewhere, and this has been confirmed by the Environment Agency. Members then are being asked to exercise their planning judgement on a number of matters this evening, namely the impact on the Green Belt, the impact on the AONB and AGLV, the design and layout of the proposals and residential immunity. Members also need to take into account the very special circumstances for the case. Members will be aware the site is located in the Green Belt, wherein the replacement of buildings can be appropriate development providing the replacement buildings are not materially larger and do not result in a change of use. As I've mentioned, the use of the site would remain the same, albeit with some redistribution of existing uses. The use would not be intensified. With regards to the replacement buildings, when taken as a whole, officers conclude that they would be materially larger, although there would be a reduction in the footprint of built form across the site. Officers have considered the very special circumstances put forward by the applicants. The site has an existing and established lawful use, and the buildings on site are not purpose-built and are not fit for purpose for that use. In order for the site to continue, it's acknowledged that a modern, appropriate facilities are required and that this would result in a requirement for some further built form. The proposals would offer community and economic benefits to the local community. The site is located in an area of outstanding natural beauty. The application is accompanied by a landscape and visual impact assessment, which has been scrutinised by officers and also by the Surrey Hills AONB adviser. Views of the site would be limited owing to its topography and its existing enclosure. The scheme does include proposals for replacement planting, which would mitigate any limited views of the proposals from outside the site. Officers are therefore satisfied that the proposals would conserve the landscape character. The design of the buildings would be a high quality and represents an opportunity to enhance the current site through appropriate design and also offers the opportunity for planning control. The recommendation, therefore, slightly amended from as set out on the update sheet, just to clarify and separate out the points of the recommendation, that permission be granted, subject to the completion of a section 106 legal agreement, to limit the number of permanent residential units and numbers of visitors to the site, to secure the community use of the Assembly Hall and to limit the occupation of the residential accommodation to ancillary and prevent it being sold off, also subject to consideration of views of outstanding consultees and representations, which have been referred to in the update sheet, referral of the application to the Secretary of State and finally to the conditions set out in the agenda and on the update. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much, Catherine. Just one question before we move on. There are two recommendations on the agenda, only one on the update sheet.
Apologies, chairman. Recommendation B in the agenda would remain as set out in the agenda report. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much. Moving on, ladies and gentlemen then. We have, um, one, two, three, four public speakers. I believe that the process has been explained to you, Ms Dedak. You have five minutes. Four minutes with a green light, one minute with a yellow light, and when you get to a red light, I will ask you to wind up if you haven't already finished. When you are ready.
Good evening, Mr Chairman, Vice-Chairman, Committee. As a lover of the health-giving countryside and being aware of the steep decline in insects, birds, flora flora and fauna, I object to the intensification of people and traffic that this proposed regional centre will generate in the quiet corner of historical Sheep Hatch Lane, Tilford. I have just heard the planning officer state that there will be no increase in traffic. I don't accept that statement without proper assessment by the Surrey County Council's traffic officers, which a report was not in the, in the, in the application. I disagree with the report that the congregating members of an international group in the proposed regional centre provides, quote, "very exceptional circumstances", unquote. The countryside is part of the English culture, and South West Surrey, its hills, woods, in farmland, heaths, rivers and streams need protection from inappropriate development, which I and others consider this proposal to be. On pages 46 and 47 of the report, planning law states that, quote, "AONB designation is to conserve and enhance natural beauty. Development inconsistent with this aim will not be permitted unless proven national interest and lack of alternative sites has been demonstrated", unquote. The Amadira Muslim Association has bought a farm at Oakhanger, 10 miles as the crow flies, from Tilford, for the group's annual international convention for up to 30,000 visitors. Oakhanger could be an alternative site, but it is not detailed in the planning report. Also shamefully and inexcusably absent for the report were the Surrey County Council's traffic and transport assessments, assessments crucial to residents in Tilford, Frensham and Dockenfield, some of whom may be unaware of the serious impact and harm caused to the frail country roads and lanes in the parish and the fragile bridges at Tilford West and Elstead, which will be pounded by increased vehicular traffic. As I say, I do not accept the report that traffic will not be increased. The borough's ratepayers need to know Surrey County Council's traffic assessments before the report recommends recommendations are accepted by you, the representatives of the people. Residents would like to know whether the increased volume of sewage at Elstead Sewage Works has been assessed and whether seven-inch pipes in Tilford are adequate in storm conditions. The rural historical site at Sheep Hatch Lane appears to be a commercial, private, international gated country club. Some neighbours have no objection to upgrading the accommodation blocks, sports facilities, gym, equestrian facilities, canteen, office and an enlarged purpose-built printing press site. It is the huge Assembly Hall and mosque which indicate large congregations which will impact the character of the Surrey Hills countryside in this sensitive biodiverse area by irrevocably changing a private, low-level commercial site into a high-level, public, regional and international centre. The 22 conditions, some of which attempt to control numbers of visitors, will be very costly for WABILI to enforce, if it is at all possible. And the, quote, "very special circumstances", unquote, frequently mentioned in this report should apply to the legal duties of the borough to protect what remains of South West Surrey's wonderful countryside. I hope, in the public interest, that you will refuse this application, which is inappropriate and unfair. Thank you for having me here.
Thank you, Ms Dedak. The next speaker is, um, from the local parish council, Mr Ralph.
The big one. The big one, Lewis Duke. Hello, good evening. Nigel Ralph, Chairman of Tilford Parish Council. The parish council had certain items that they sought to have imposed as conditions, and I feel that it is worth you knowing what those were. The application has been amended to remove the height of the minaret towers to the same height as the mosque, and that has been achieved in this revised application. One of the things that concerned the council was wind turbines on the minarets. Those have been removed. And my request today is that that be a condition, that they don't return thereafter. It's been removed with the consent of the Amadira community, and so I just wish to see that that is held fast by imposition of condition. The other important factor that the local parish council considered was tree screening. The two major buildings are the mosque and the sports hall, which are considerably higher than anything existing there by two and a half to potentially three times the height. And the feeling was that the existing tree screening was essential and should therefore be confirmed as going to be in place in the future. And to that extent, I see that there is a tree protection plan and there is an arboretum cultural method statement. But both of these should state that any dead trees should be replaced with mature trees and that there should be a determination that the degree of screening shall not in any manner diminish in the future. The reason for this is that these two buildings are not only much higher than anything existing, but they are also perched on the top of a hillside, which from the south will be very obvious if the tree screening disappears. Moving on. The public address system, the planning officer stated that these, there will be a condition that these will not be attached to the minarets. But the condition that the planning, sorry, Tilford Parish Council sought was that they should not be on the minaret nor the mosque nor the sports hall, i.e. any of the high buildings. So a public address system, can we please have a condition removing those, the ability to put a public address system on any of those three buildings? And then there was also a concern that there is a preponderance in favour for Tilford residents in favour of a dark sky environment. And so there was a request that lighting should be low level and downward facing. And I don't feel that the condition in the proposal that we have here necessarily confirms that to the degree that we're seeking. We want to try to maintain the dark sky environment of Tilford. It's a village that wants to remain a rural village. And those are our main items of comment. I believe that the planning officer has largely addressed these in her report, but I think they need tweaking to the extent that I've highlighted today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr Ralph.
Thank you, Chair, members of the committee. And I don't really need to get into much more detail in terms of the officers' [inaudible]. in terms of the officer's quite professional report, which I think believed covered all of the issues and demonstrates, I think, very clearly the special circumstances for the site. The post-modernisation of accommodation at Islamabad is a response very much to the aging nature of the existing accommodation, which you may have seen on site, and a desire by the association to be a long-term custodian of the site and to provide a centre for religious and educational instruction, which will be used by the association over the coming decades. The existing accommodation, as you will have seen, is unsustainable, is requiring constant maintenance and does not meet modern standards of layout, energy efficiency or quality. It is considered that when looking at each of the structures on the site and the proposed footprint, floor space and the height in regard to your policies, that the overall changes are not principally material in the majority of buildings across the site. That is, the lower level residential buildings and the religious and educational buildings. The three buildings perhaps where there is a material increase in height are the guest facility, the new sports hall and mosque. And all of these are located in what are believed to be secluded positions on the site and which will meet the needs of the association in providing assembly use and a new religious centre for the site, as well as a place where they're suitable for prayer. In response to the objectors' comments, neither of these or any of these facilities are sized to meet increased needs or increased numbers. Certainly the mosque, at the moment, the mosque is in a chalet on the site and is totally inappropriate. The new facility, the new mosque will be a highly well-designed, sustainable and I think quite exemplary design, which will meet the needs of the people on the site. It's not designed to bring more people into the site. The AMA has occupied the site for nearly thirty years and wishes to remain on the site for a long time. It is an important site for them and the people who are engaged in the site and also live there. The AMA is willing to see the restrictions which the officer has noted in her report and is also willing to offer access to the sports hall to provide additional benefits to the wider community. The association has been part of this local community for over thirty years and that is, we believe, reflected in the support of the parish council and the overwhelming support that was presented at the public consultation. The proposed scheme, we believe, has very limited impact on the open character of the Green Belt and there are very exceptional circumstances, we believe, related to the long-term use of the site. As the officer identified, a landscape visual impact assessment has been submitted with the application and that demonstrates the very limited views of the site from a large number of locations which were agreed with the officer. And this can be further evidenced by the support of the Surrey A O N B officer, the English nature and also Surrey wildlife in identifying, they're not raising any objections to our scheme. Quickly in response to the comments made by the parish council in relation to conditions, the association would be happy to see a condition which said no public address anywhere on site. These days actually, prayer is actually identified on apps. We're in the twenty-first century. So the public address system isn't actually required. In terms of planting, again, we'd be happy to see additional planting on site to ensure that the buildings are screened as much as possible. And certainly it's always been our intention that lighting should be very low level. And again, a lighting strategy submitted through the conditions, we believe, could address any concerns that could be raised. We believe this application provides a very high quality of design with materials which are complementary to both the character of the site and the nature of the surrounding area. It is a beautiful area, as the objector identified, and the AMA have been a custodian of the site for over thirty years and wish to keep that very unique character to the site for the future. That is why the design that has been put forward uses timber and other materials which are complementary to the character of that area and have visually quite low level. In summary, I think really this is a new chapter for the site, which will provide sensitively designed and sustainable, energy-efficient buildings to assist the association in its custodianship of it. It is not proposed to increase in any way the number of visitors or the number of residents that live on site or visit the site. And as identified by the Surrey County Council officer, highway officer, there will be no significant transport impacts to this development. We would hope that you, as a committee, would support the association in bringing this development forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And finally, Ms Anderson Payne. We have the local member, rather late with your request to speak at this committee meeting, but the chairman's discretion has given you four minutes.
Thank you, Chairman, for that. Good evening. As the local borough councillor, I have a significant number of concerns in respect of this application. May I start with page forty-one, where it states there's no formal planning history in existence? I believe that there is. Previous administrations were well aware that Surrey County Council sold the site as an educational establishment with substantial conditions. This can be verified by a previous borough solicitor, Sarah Whitmarsh, who looked into it at the time and is currently the borough solicitor for Portsmouth. And I believe that this information needs to be researched further. I understand the policy for exceptional building in the Green Belt is to meet our housing needs. It seems to me, however, that the construction of a place of worship, mosque, church or temple does not actually help our housing need. Also, building a sports hall doesn't really help our housing need either and could take business away from our own facilities. I'm not aware indeed that there is actually a need for a sports hall in Tilford. In respect of the housing, the buildings are predominantly classrooms with some accommodation. It has never been claimed that the existing buildings are independent dwellings. A review by enforcement in April twenty twelve confirmed this and Waverley's council tax records bear this out. There is actually only one dwelling registered and that's a bungalow currently on the site. All the rest is ancillary to education and has a very low valuation as a consequence. Likewise, there is no specific guest house accommodation registered with the borough, although on the current plan there is a small block so defined. The guest accommodation proposed is some two-hundred-and-forty-eight percent larger than the small block. Is it proposed to register this as a hostel, bed and breakfast or indeed hotel services? In twenty-ten, it was proposed that a college be built on this site, but that proposal was subsequently withdrawn and the education element was relocated to a new site between Hindhead and Hazelmeath. The main activity on the site currently is in fact translation and printing, which involves considerable commercial transport. There appears to be a reliance on the traffic assessments supplied by the applicant. These are frequently unreliable and more work needs to be done to verify these figures. In short, I believe the description used in the architect's submission in section one point one point three, that this site is planned as a regional hub for Farnham, Orderstock, Guildford, Oxford, Woking and Reading, is a much more accurate description of the planned use for the site. Does this in fact justify the officer's assessment of suitable use for the Green Belt, E N O B and A G L V? I urge the committee to reject this application on the basis that there are no dwellings to replace. The planned expansion of construction and density is inappropriate for the Green Belt and A O N B. There is no educational requirement now that a college has been developed a short distance away. There is no need for a sports hall in Tilford and that there is minimal contribution to the local community with no provision for local housing. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Members. Mr Morgan.
Thank you, Chairman. Since there seems to be some reluctance amongst members to kick the ball off, may I do so? Can I say that what we have just heard, I think echoes a great deal of what I have been hearing recently. This site is not in my ward, but is well within a stone's throat of it and I pass by it quite frequently. I am amazed at the traffic assessment that's been made. Anyone who endeavours to pass along the Tilford Street at certain times of the day will encounter a traffic jam exceeding sometimes half a mile in length. And this is in a country village. I have no doubt the amount of usage that this site, that is proposed to this site, will increase that dramatically. I can only assume that officers and particularly the county council highways team chose to go at a time when there was no traffic about. However, this is a regular occurrence in the Tilford Road at this site due to the parents picking up and dropping off children at a school that has no off-road facilities. Can I say that, looking back at this, this was originally a school and it obviously had residential accommodation because it was a boarding establishment, as it were, and the staff needed accommodation. That's no longer so. Most of the standard educational requirement has moved to Hindhead and presumably the staff have other accommodation now. I fail to see why it's necessary to include so many residential units in an area, in a facility that is now largely printing and publicity-based for the local area. Can I say that I too have been aware of Sarah Whitmarsh's input into this and I believe she is available to give information to officers if they so wish and that can be arranged. But I suppose, at the end of the day, Chairman, I would be prepared to go along with what is on the board there, provided that we can limit the number of permanent residential units to the permitted use for the site, that is of an educational and religious manner. To simply limit the number there, which would enable them to be sold off or whatever at some future time, I think would be wrong. We need to tighten up the conditions there. I have no problem with replacing the units that need replacing for the lawful use of the site. The current ones are in a dreadful condition. But I think this goes much further than is needed for that purpose. The community use of the assembly hall, that would be nice, but I can't think what it might be. The community doesn't have any need of that sort of assembly hall. And the residential accommodation must be ancillary and not sold off separately at any time. I think the number of permanent residential units is something that officers should look at very carefully to determine what that number should be and ensure that the section one oh six agreement is a sensible estimate of what it needs to be and not the blanket figure that we've been given here. I'm sure the Secretary of State will do what he has to do in due course, whatever we say, Chairman. So I'm content to leave it to the discretion of members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Morgan. Mr O'Grady.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yeah, I think I'd echo some of what councillor Morgan said, but maybe in a slightly different way. I didn't quite catch from the officer's presentation earlier what the actual average numbers of people using the site at any given time are. I can find things here about the number of residences and the number of overnight stays in a given week or whatever, but actually how many people at a time, maximum, would need to use the site outside of special events? The reason I ask is because I have no issue at all, as councillor Morgan has just said, with the updating and renewal of the living accommodation. It's in a shabby condition. It needs something done about it. What I am astonished by is the sheer scale of the mosque and the sports hall, which seem, based on the numbers I'm trying to work backwards from the report to give, seem out of all proportion to what's needed on site for a relatively small number of people. The height of the mosque in particular surprised me. I spent quite a lot of time in Muslim countries and I've seen many low-rise mosques used by tens, if not hundreds, of people quite regularly and particularly on Fridays, of course. And I'm baffled as to why the mosque needs to be so high, particularly in such a sensitive area. The point is made by the Surrey Hills A O N B planning adviser that whilst it might be unreasonable to restrict usage, this is the last paragraph from page thirty-four, if anybody's that interested. There needs to be, or it's considered there should be some mitigation and compensatory landscaping measures. Well, if you've got a forty-foot-high minaret and a forty-foot-high roof on a mosque, you've got to put in a hell of a bit of landscaping to try and disguise it from a distance. This is in a very sensitive area. And the sports hall is, of course, even bigger and more looming. Those of you who've been in the council a while will remember an application some seven and a half years ago, I think it was, for what is now the sports centre in Moncton Lane in Farnham, which has completely changed the character of the area by its utter dominance. It's huge and that was in a sensitive area as well. This is Green Belt land and this will be a dominating feature visible from quite a distance unless it is landscaped to the extent you're almost planting new forests around it to block it out. And I cannot see that that is actually reasonable. One thing that does surprise me slightly is on the update sheet, the third paragraph after the bullet on the update to the report, "in addition, the proposal constitutes inappropriate development in the Green Belt." If it's inappropriate development, why are we even considering it? As I say, there is no problem at all with renewing the living accommodation. That's perfectly reasonable. There'd be no problem at all with renewing the mosque. I'm just baffled by the scale of these two public buildings and what they're needed for.
Thank you very much. Mrs Coburn.
Thank you, Chairman. I was sort of holding back. I was actually waiting for the other local member to speak. I've actually been quite shocked at what I've heard. I live very close to this. My ward abuts Tilford. And in fact, as you go out of me, you come into Tilford, as it were. So I know the site well. I couldn't manage the site visit, but I've visited the site several times. And I think most of us who've been to the site would feel that you get the best of all possible welcomes in the worst of all possible buildings. We wouldn't start from here, given fresh bit of Green Belt. You wouldn't say, oh yes, let's build all of what's been proposed tonight, but that's not where we're starting from. We have an existing community which has worked well for years, which reaches out to its local residents and they are coming in here for improved accommodation for what's there. This is not a new accommodation. I mean, sorry, it's a new accommodation, but it's not a new use. The school's been there for a long, long time and the buildings that are there, they exist. I can accept some reservations about the size of the sports accommodation. They're not things of great beauty, wherever they are. And I also take the point that you're going to put in big trees, but then there are such things. I just feel, I'm really quite shocked at the, I have to choose my words carefully here, the resistance to this. I actually thought I was coming along tonight to hear people welcoming some improvement to this existing accommodation, which is just so past its sell-by date. It's, you know, we certainly wouldn't be able to read it if we could find it. I think the parish council's conditions seem to have addressed most of people's concerns. And certainly I would agree with everything that the speaker from the parish council said and would make sure that the conditions are firm. I would certainly agree to any condition to make sure that this remained, any residential accommodation remained ancillary to the main use on the building. But I just find it quite astonishing that this existing use, which has been successful over decades, should now find itself with quite so many vehement opposers. I don't see the problem, I really don't. I do see the problem, as I say, starting from scratch, but starting from where we are, like the Irish joke, you wouldn't always do so, but you have to, I'm afraid. I think this is a very good and long overdue updating of some facilities that certainly do in the local community, don't seem to be antisocial in any way whatsoever, except there's some traffic. There's traffic everywhere in Farnham. It's one of the things we live with. But with this use, as we have seen it presented tonight by the officers and by the speakers, then I really can't see that there's going to be anything we can't cope with as a result of this application.
Thank you very much. Mr Isherwood.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm also a councillor with a ward bordering on Tilford. I look at the page forty-one and it says, "the lawful use of the site I look at the page forty-one, and it says, "The lawful use of the site is now a religious education and teaching facility." It says nothing about industrial use, which I find quite interesting. Why? Is it not in the application? Because some of my mail gets through to me with complaints from people in Tylford, not in Hindhead, in Tylford, talking about the traffic early morning in particular, trundling along Sheep Hatch Lane. The rest of what councillor Morgan said about Tylford and its traffic problems, I emphasise with totally. I find the Waverley Abbey School right next door to it is one reason why we cannot allow public address systems to be put on. I understand that that's now withdrawn, but I make the point. I find that the mosque on the highest point of the site is a sensitive area, and in the greenbelt, AONB, AGRV, I find the sports hall and the size of the mosque, which look absolutely superb in design, but they're inappropriate on the highest part of the site. I also go along with the dark sky environment. I sincerely hope that that is taken on board by all who are looking at this application. So I find it very difficult. The accommodation certainly needs changing, but we do seem to have missed a trick if there's only one accommodation unit that we are registered as having on that site. We know that from the electoral register that there are many people living there permanently. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr Gates.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Firstly, I'd like to thank those who have spoken, it's always helpful to have this advice and guidance, and indeed, different views. I rather strongly share councillor Coburn's view, that this site is what it is. We're not starting from scratch, it has been there for thirty years, it is quite evident from the site visit that updating is desperately needed, the conditions there are not satisfactory, and that overall, we are not actually catering for more residential accommodation, and I don't think anywhere in the report is there any statement that this is aimed at meeting or not meeting Waverley's housing needs. I think the design is good, I thought the response from the association's representative in respect of the parish council's views was very positive. I think the parish council has, and after all, they're probably closest to it, have made some good points, which have been recognised, and I support them being included as conditions. The AONB officer is supportive of this. Now, those are the people we rely upon for definitive views. The highways authority is not concerned about this because, as we have seen, it will not generate any additional traffic, and I think if we were to reject it, it would remain as it is with exactly the same amount of traffic as there is now. So I'm not at all convinced that we should reject this, I'm struggling to find some planning reasons to reject it, other than I don't like it very much. I think the mosque and the sports hall will inevitably be slightly contentious, but we must remember that not far and behind that to the east is a very large school, and I would suspect that that also has some effect on the visual impact. So overall, and on balance, I think this is a very necessary and indeed important. Just as an anecdote, if you Google my name, you will find only one thing that I've ever done, and that is to address the annual convention of the Amadé Muslim Association. That was, of course, an alton, no longer held at Tylford, and I am clearly on record as supporting strongly their aims and objectives. So both from that point of view and from the point of view, this is a site that is desperately in need of updating, I will be supporting, with the necessary changes to the conditions, I will be supporting this application. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr Nichols.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Before coming to a view, I'd like to say four points clarified by officers first, which have come up in the course of the debate. Firstly, what time of day was the traffic survey done? And indeed, I think that would clarify a lot of what's gone on. The question to previous solicitor's advice, is it on record? If not, why not? And so potentially, does it exist and was it considered? Thirdly, how many dwellings on the site are registered now for the purposes of council tax, and how many will be registered afterwards? And finally, the question of the scale of the mosque and the sports hall, were smaller variants of these buildings suggested as part of the planning process? If not, what reasons behind that not being suggested as part of the, as you go through? So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Before we move on with other members, Catherine Ismael, there were a number of points made by the parish council representative, and one or two that have come out, including those last four. I wondered if somebody might like to address those. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I can probably pick up a couple of those points. With regards to your first point, councillor Nichols, I'm just looking at the transport assessment now to work out when that was carried out, so bear with me. It does exist, there is an addendum for that. With regards to the numbers of independent dwellings registered on the site, I don't have that information, I understand from your colleague, it's just the bungalow at the moment. I would stress the accommodation is proposed to be, as is ancillary to the other uses on the site, and not to be sold off separately as independent C3 dwelling houses, so you would have that control as part of the application. Yeah, with regards to your final question about alternatives, obviously, the scheme before you is the one to be considered. The proposals were the subject of pre-application discussions, but it is not obviously for your officers to design proposals for the applicants, the proposals are as submitted, and we have to make a judgement on that basis. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr Isherwood, you raised the point about industrial use, and the fact that there is no planning permission sought for that, I assume it's the printing press?
Thank you, Chairman. If I draw members' attention to page forty-three of their agenda, it does set out for you two tables in terms of existing uses and then the proposed uses, and you'll see in that list, both lists, there is reference to printing press and administration, that may be where the reference has come from. As with all these uses, they are all components of the one single planning unit and planning use, they're not individual standalone uses, and therefore, we haven't made reference to an industrial process on the site because we're talking about a composite set of uses to serve the educational use of the site. So I hope that answers the question. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr Nichols.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you very much for your responses. My question on point four was, as part of that pre-application process, was it raised? We're cited that this is very special circumstances, I'm just looking into the background of that. And my second point wasn't actually answered, the question of the previous council solicitor's advice.
Thank you, Chairman. If I could start with the latter point, I have to say, I think that's the first indication we've had that there is any other information available to the council, including that from the former chief solicitor, who I think left the council some fifteen, maybe even twenty years ago. So that, I think, is a little bit of a surprise to us, it perhaps would have been helpful, perhaps, to have heads up on that question before the meeting, but we are where we are. But what I would say is that officers are confident in the information that we're giving you in respect to the planning history, we've checked our records, and what is important for purposes of assessing the planning application is what is the current lawful use of the site. And we've looked at the planning history that's before you, and also what has been happening on the site for the last ten years, which of course is the critical time period for a use. So whatever happened before that, which we don't have information on, we're not able to comment on, but nor is it actually relevant in that your starting point is what is the current lawful use and what are the applicants moving from. So I would urge members to be confident that the information in the report is as accurate as we feel it can be. And the other point, I think, was about negotiation on the scale. As Catherine has explained, we've assessed the application on its merits, although there was pre-application discussion in which we gave advice to the applicants in respect of the sensitive location of the site, particularly in the greenbelt and the area of outstanding actual beauty, which would obviously have a bearing on the height, size and scale of any development, they've obviously chosen, have in regard to their needs, to submit the application that they have. So as planning authority, we now need to go forward and assess whether it is in contravention of policy. You'll see from our report that whilst we recognise it is higher, and taking into account the views of the AONB board, that we don't think overall that it's in conflict with the AONB policy. It is inappropriate development in the greenbelt, and we've acknowledged that, but of course, the conversation doesn't stop there, we have to then go on to decide if there are very special circumstances to justify outweighing that harm to the greenbelt, and that, of course, is members' judgement, have in regard to the case that's been made. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you very much. I still have a number of speakers. Mrs Cable.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to say that I broadly go along with what Mrs Coburn and Mr Gates have already said, so I won't repeat that, but the one thing I do have slight concern over is the size of the mosque and the Assembly Hall. But regarding the mosque, if you look at the top of page, well, of page forty-four, am I correct where it says prayer? Does that refer to the mosque? Where it says that the footprint is two hundred and twenty-nine square metres, and the proposed is three hundred and ten? Is that correct?
If I could confirm, yes.
That's right. Therefore, regarding the mosque, I did go on the site visit, and I did go into the mosque, and it seemed to me that it was quite a small building for any sort of religious purpose. Therefore, I don't really think that an increase of eighty-one square metres is really excessive. You're not going to get masses more people coming into that extra space. I do accept that the sports hall is much, well, they haven't got one at the moment, so sorry, not sports hall, the Assembly Hall, so therefore, that is obviously going to be an increase, and the height of both those buildings does worry me slightly. Nevertheless, taking this package as a whole, I do think that this is going to be a great improvement on the site, it will tidy it up, and it will in fact give much better facilities for the people using it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs Cable. Mr Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. First, I'd like to say that I agree with a number of speakers over the aims and relationships with the Amadean Association. I think they have been very good neighbours, and I like the approach that they take to life in general and the help that they give people. However, I am concerned about this development. When originally the people on the site moved in, there were thirty-three people there. Most of the, what is now recalled accommodation, were in fact for teaching, they were in fact classrooms. What has happened over time is that the classrooms have gradually been replaced by accommodation, not replaced, it's just moved in. So the number of people on the site have crept up steadily, without ever asking this council for permission to do so. And I notice in the new application that there are two large, fairly large buildings which are designated for education purposes, so presumably, they would also then be eventually turned into accommodation. The main, as my colleague said, the main education element is now done in a new site between Hindhead and Hazelmeier. The education on the site is strictly, strictly limited, it is mainly a printing and translation setup. Many people on the site don't actually work there at all, they're just a dormitory area. And I'm most concerned that all of this has been allowed to happen without any additional council tax being levied, any additional applications for dwelling houses, in fact, you know, the whole site valuation is less than the normal level D house. So, I mean, it is ridiculous that all of this is going on, they're not, the community, the community contribution is absolutely minimal, and we get a constant, just in the last five years, there's been a considerable increase in the number of people on the site. Most of their children are actually educated in our local schools. So, as I say, the education element is minimal, but it is being emphasised here because they know that is the raison d'etre of the site. So I am most concerned about this application, and I would hope that the committee will in fact reject it, and that we'll come back and have another look at a smaller mosque and a smaller hall, and I'm not against them having some improvement, but I think that the application should be properly registered, I think the new housing is new, it's not been ever registered as housing as such, and I think proper council tax should be paid on it, and the appropriate contributions to the local community made. So I hope this application itself will be rejected, and that we can come up with a better solution for the ward and the other residents as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr Mallon.
Thank you, Chairman. We broadly agree with the conclusions of councillor Adams, for slightly different reasons. I know a little bit about the community, and they certainly impress me, but everyone has to follow the same rules, and the concern I have is really with the height of the mosque and the sports hall. I've been to a number of places as well, where I've seen very much lower mosques, and they obviously do their job. So while I have no problem with the improvement to the residential accommodation, albeit with all the clarification as to what is registered for what in due course, having seen those buildings, they certainly need to be improved and renewed. But I do not see how very special circumstances have been put forward, indeed, I couldn't see what they were on page fifty-eight, it just appears to be a statement by officers that they think they exist, and without any convincing reasons, I think, while the new mosque is certainly a very good idea, and an Assembly Hall, please may they be of a rather smaller height, I don't care too much about the area, but I think the height is quite unnecessarily high, and as the officer's put it very fairly, it's not their job to design an application. And what I would say is that I think we should reject this application, but encourage the community to come forward with a new application as quickly as they can, which can achieve their main ends, while I think giving more weight very properly to the greenbelt requirements. So my position is that while I support their general aims, I'm afraid I can't support this particular application because the mosque and the sports hall are just too high.
Thank you very much. Mr O'Grady, you wanted to come back.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. Firstly, I don't think I heard an answer to my question about the numbers of people on site, if indeed we know what it is, but I am grateful that we've had it pointed out, and I had missed it, the floor areas for prayer, and the point that is made elsewhere, that this is not to increase numbers, but to increase modern space considerations and levels of comfort. But to agree completely with what councillor Mulliner has just said, I don't understand why we're looking at such large communal facilities, the mosque and the sports hall, given apparently no increase in numbers of people. Councillor Gates made the point that, of course, this is quite close to a school, I would make the point that we're not looking at building a new school, this is a new application that we have to look at. There is accommodation on site which is substandard, nobody here, I don't believe, has said that this should not be permitted. The question appears to be around the mosque and the sports hall. The sports hall is a real question mark in my mind as to what it's even needed for, there isn't one now, it's not something which is replacing an extant provision. The mosque is, but it's more than doubling the height, and I simply can't see why that is the case. We're not here to redesign things, were it possible, and I don't think it is, but I'll take advice, it might be nice to defer this, to see if the mosque and the sports hall can be readdressed, and whether the height can be lowered, otherwise, I feel I have to vote against this because those two elements are unacceptable in this situation. in this situation.
Thank you very much. Mr Morgan, you wanted to come back.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I do find myself somewhat surprised to be in total agreement virtually with the last three, last three speakers, and it's a very pleasant experience, and I'm going to enjoy it. But I would say that I do think, I do think this, this application really needs to be reconsidered. Not only the mosque and the, and the sports hall, but the dwellings that we're being asked to look at have been surreptitiously converted into residential from what they once were many years ago, in order to serve what was then a school or education facility. Now, the education facility has transferred elsewhere, towards Hindhead, and it's no longer of the, the size and nature that it once was. And I question therefore whether the same amount of accommodation is, is appropriate, given that there is no proper planning application for this in any case. We are really virtually looking at a new application here. So I would, I would like to see this, this application taken away and reconsidered. It seems to me that we are setting up something here that was not originally envisaged. It's something of a residential facility, complete with mosque and sports hall, and a fairly minimal amount compared to previous history, minimal amount of actual education, and that is a substantial change of use in my view. I think officers ought to be able to advise the applicant on preparing a new application that might be more amenable to the members. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, on the question that earlier we talked about by Mr Morgan was about traffic, and other people spoke about that. I must have missed a trick somewhere, because every time I've driven down those lanes, I haven't seen any other vehicles, let alone been in a traffic jam. But there must be other times when there is lots of traffic, and how much of that is associated with this particular place, or is it just the local community, going to and from the school, et cetera? I suspect it is the latter, to a large degree, and when I've ever driven into Telford in the past, the activities of the local community and other things going on there is quite expansive, and it can create problems, but not in Sheep Hax Lane when I've driven there. So that's, that's one point. The sports facilities and its size, I understand, and it is in the documents, saying that these are going to be shared facilities, the school is going to benefit from it, from the use of these facilities, and therefore that is a plus, I think, by the school. I question this, our, our problems with the height of the mosque. Will we have a similar problem if we have a church that was going to be built here? With a tower? What do we look across with the constable's pictures or whatever? A lovely open scene with a church and a, and a very tall steeple? Are we just changing, are we not changing order, are we not living, moving with the times? Personally, I'm supportive of this thing. I do, do understand and have a level of concern about the, the accommodation situation with regard to whether they are counted as dwellings and therefore are rated. This will be dealt with by the Valuation Office. It's not our responsibility, I don't believe, to deal with that. It should be dealt with by the Valuation Office, and I'm sure they, they would do that if requested or made aware of the situation. So, in principle, I'm happy with what is being proposed, and happy to, to agree with the officer's recommendation, with the amendments that we've all talked about.
Thank you very much. Joe, you wanted to work.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just in terms of the council tax, I've been sitting here racking my brains over it, and I think that, because historically the site has been of a educational facility with ancillary accommodation, those dwellings of ancillary, the use is residential ancillary, and therefore they're not independently rated for council tax purposes, quite often with enforcement issues. If we're looking at somebody who has a lovely shed in their back garden, that all of a sudden they start renting out, and we look at that to see if it's no longer ancillary to the main use of the dwelling, one of the things we would look for was whether or not it was rated. And so I think at present, the reason for the council tax not being rated is because the, the use is seen as being ancillary. But I completely agree with councillor Byham in that, obviously, that would be something that would be looked at by our valuation department, and, and if necessary, would be enforced by them. So you can be reassured on that, on that element. I just wanted to clarify that to the committee.
Thank you very much. Mr Inchboard.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, a comment on councillor Byham's closing remark. There is a precedent. The Southern Area Committee rejected an application by the Baptist community in Chittingfold for a new chapel, simply on the grounds of its bulk. It was on Green Belt land. The primary reason for rejecting it was on its size. I welcome most of the changes being proposed. Clearly, the site needs cleaning up, and they all have a lawful existing use. But I, like many other speakers, am very concerned about the size of the hall and the I'm not at all convinced that there is a need for the, for a hall of this size, and certainly of this height. And I also assume that there isn't, well, I think it's reasonable for the mosque to be an impressive building that will stand out from the buildings around it. It is, after all, at the very heart of what the establishment is all about. And I wonder whether the height that is being proposed reflects the height of the sports hall, in that the mosque has to stand higher than that. If the sports hall was reduced, then a perfectly impressive building could be erected as a mosque to replace the existing one, which clearly is quite inadequate. So I am, like other speakers, very unhappy about the size of these two buildings. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Mr Gates, you wanted to...
Thank you for coming. Allow me to come back, and thank you, Joe, very much for the clarification that council tax is not normally a planning matter. I would just like to dwell on the sports hall. It seems to have changed its name. It's actually a multi-purpose assembly hall, and members will know from page forty-three that the footprint of this is smaller than the footprint of the accommodation that is used for these type of purposes that it replaces. It's eight hundred and two square metres compared with nine hundred and seventy, which is currently used. There is, of course, if you're going to have a sports hall, let's be realistic about it, and this has been discussed and it is in the papers, you do need a minimum height of ceiling, otherwise you can't play sports there. So if members want a sports hall that will be of value to Waverley Abbey School and the local community, then you will need to have that minimum height. If you just want an assembly hall, then clearly it can be much lower, but then don't pretend that you've got a smaller sports hall, because sports halls need a certain minimum height, otherwise you can't play sports in them. I'd rather support the idea of playing sports in a sports hall, but that the main purpose of this, or the, the secondary purpose of this, is as a multi-purpose assembly hall. I think that's a good use of, of resources. So I thought I'd just bring that point to members' attention. I think it won't change anybody's mind, but at least it will be brought to their attention.
Thank you very much. Mr Morgan, you wish to come back yet again?
Sorry, Chairman. No, I merely had a question that I rather hope officers can help me with. I got confused by the council tax issue, I'm, I'm afraid, because I didn't think that was at all relevant to what we were doing here. But I am aware of a substantial reduction in educational use of the site, and I would simply ask officers, would that necessarily, or reasonably, result in a reduction in the ancillary residential accommodation that might be deemed appropriate? And the other issue I have is, I'm still not quite certain what time this survey was taken, nor am I councillor Byham sure what time you visited this area, but I can offer you certain times when you will see something rather different.
Thank you very much. Perhaps I could say a few words then, members. My first experience of Istanbul at Telford was in two thousand and two, when I found myself as mayor invited to address the Jalsasalana in my stocking feet. And I have to say that I approached that site with no previous knowledge, and I found in fact, the influx of thirty thousand people onto the site, which is where they used to hold the Jalsasalana, absolutely no problem at all. I wasn't held up in traffic. There were sufficient stewards directing traffic and keeping everything under control. Obviously, things happen elsewhere in Telford, but I had absolutely no problem getting there or indeed getting back out again. The accommodation on there, pretty much all of the buildings, I find reminiscent of my time in the RAF, where the buildings that I found myself billeted in were relatively seedy, crumbling, rotting, because most of them are made of wood, and I can imagine just how appalling most of these buildings must be now, after thirty or forty years, standing there, and I would agree with the applicant, they certainly do need replacing. As has been said, the levying of council tax or not is not a planning matter, but I'm quite sure that even his valuation officer will be able to sort that out if there is a need for it to be sorted out. I think the mosque and the sports hall, I believe the sports hall, the assembly hall, whatever, will be of great advantage not only to Waverley Abbey School, but I think also the local community, because they may well be any number of sportsmen there as well. It is, I think, very, very significant from my point of view, that whilst Telford Parish Council has raised a number of concerns, one of them has not been traffic. And I think that is significant, because if the parish council does not feel that there is a major problem, members who may not know the wall, the Telford Wall, as well as local members do, perhaps are over-egging the traffic problems there. I believe personally that the mosque is a landmark building, and I personally do support it, as indeed do I support the assembly come sports hall as well. I thank Catherine for a very, very comprehensive report, and I thank you too, Catherine, for an excellent site visit as well. So I personally would actually support this, because I believe that it is in dire need of a major update, and I think this will provide facilities that will be sufficient for the association, the Muslim Association, for many, many years to come. Unless there are any other speakers, I would suggest then, ladies and gentlemen, that we move to the officers' recommendation.
On a point of order, Chairman, I did ask several questions that have not been answered yet.
My apologies, Mr Morgan. Are we, are we of those questions? They will be answered.
Thank you, Chairman. In relation to the question about whether or not the increase in ancillary residential accommodation can be justified, I would just take members back to the paragraph on Green Belt analysis, which is page forty-two, which sets the proposal against the MPPF policy and the policy in your local plan, which basically, in terms of the MPPF, requires you to decide whether or not the replacement of buildings will be materially larger. Now, in that, you're not being asked to be satisfied that there is a need for that accommodation as such, you're being asked to look at the uplift in size of buildings. Now, we have acknowledged overall there is a twelve percent increase, and that it, that the buildings would on that basis be materially larger, but it's not a huge increase, bearing in mind your own policies indicate an uplift of about ten percent, is normally not materially larger. So that takes you straight then on to deciding whether or not, do you find it to be materially larger? And I would imagine you, you may well do, but that is your judgement actually, but we recommend overall they are materially larger, and that takes you on to considering, are there very special circumstances? And in the round, the case put for by the applicants is that this redeveloped set of facilities is justified because of the poor state of the buildings and the need to rationalise the, the existing uses in the way that they're doing that. So it's really accepting the proposal on its merits as to whether or not you find the case has been made for very special circumstances or not, as opposed to picking the items out individually and expecting a justification for them as individual components. Does that answer your question, councillor Morgan?
Very indirectly and very effectively. Thank you.
We've got another couple of answers, Chairman, if that's all right. Catherine's going to pick those up. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to clarify your points, councillor O'Grady and councillor Nichols as well. The transport statement refers to there being a hundred and thirty-five residents in thirty-three residential units on the site. The transport assessment is based on the existing use of the site and the existing vehicular movements from that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. I see we have a couple more speakers here. Mr Nichols.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I genuinely sort of wanted to get answered those questions, so thank you very much, that helped me clarify my view on it. I couldn't make the site visit, but from seemingly the universal view on this is that it's in a rotten state. Anything when compared to an RAF base must be, having spent some time with the army. I wouldn't wish to see families or people, young children living in that, and I'm satisfied with the officer's view that it is still primarily an educational area. I have enormous reservations over the size involved, and I take councillor Coburn's point that we wouldn't wish to start here. Yet we are where we are, so we must show a degree of pragmatism. As someone who takes his faith very seriously, I would imagine a mosque or church is a huge part of that community and deserves a certain standing and stature. Bearing all that in mind, and hugely swayed by the views of the chairman of the parish council, that seems to have been a genuinely collaborative process, with a lot of good grace shown on both sides, I will be supporting the motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr O'Grady.
No, thank you, Mr Chairman. I got the answer to my numbers, so that was all. Thank you.
Mr Hess.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I've been listening to all of this with great interest, and one thing that I can't reconcile with previous applications that have come before us for proposal to develop in the Green Belt or in anything that remotely touches an AOMB, and that is that it seems that the need for residential units has actually declined, and yet this application would, seeks to increase the residential capacity, which goes entirely contrary to decisions that we've made in the past about other developments that have sought to do anything that has any sort of change or impact on the AOMB or the Green Belt. So I'm unclear, I'm really mystified as to why we would be seeking to promote increased footprint and increased usage of this development, since it very much sits in the Green Belt. I'm also impressed by the precedent that was established with the Baptists in Chittingfold, I believe, because this is going to be a radically different type of structure to what's currently there, and it does seem that it will really impact on the, the local aspect. It will radically change the nature of that site and, and the areas that overlook it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No other speakers? No outstanding questions that need to be answered? Let's go, ladies and gentlemen, to the unnumbered at the last page then, of the update sheet. I think there is on the screen behind me, and unfortunately, this one and that one in front of me aren't working, so I will try and read that. Perhaps not. You have, ah, thank you. You have a revised recommendation there on the screen. Permission be granted, subject to A, the Commission of a Section 106 agreement within three months of the date of the meeting, to limit the number of permanent residential units and the number of visitors to the site, to include an event management strategy, to secure the community use of the Assembly Hall, and to limit occupation of the residential accommodation to ancillary and to prevent it being... and to prevent it being sold off separately; b) consideration of the views of outstanding consult, consultees and any further representations received; and c) referral to the secretary of state; and d) the attached conditions, which I think are under 22 on page 61 to 70 on the agenda and 22 and 23 on the update sheet, plus three informatives. Have I covered the lot there, Catherine? Yes, I think, can I see members? Ah, no. Perhaps not?
Chairman, just to clarify, whether members wanted any of the conditions amended in light of the parish council comments?
I, I think that as regards the concerns of the parish council, I thought these had been discussed already with officers and the applicant and changes had been made.
Chairman, just, just to clarify, the, the only two really, I, I understand, were the, the lighting, there is a condition recommended to, for a lighting scheme that can be amplified, that condition if felt necessary, to suggest that any lighting should be low level and downward facing. There is also a condition with regards to noise and public address, if members feel that they want to amend that or amplify that in any way. So, can, to members?
Chairman, there was a suggestion that, that that be amended to read that no public address system be installed, external, yeah. And if members are in agreement with that, we would amend accordingly.
Members are happy with that? And as regards the low level lighting, yes? And also wind turbines, our turbines have already gone and tree screening, the parish council wanted replacement of any dead trees. Is that included within the conditions? It is. And, Mr Gates?
Just to clarify that a wind turbine would require planning permission, generally speaking?
Yes, Chair. Yes, councillor Gates.
So just to be clear, there are no wind turbines within the planning, current planning application?
Chairman, just as a safeguard, it might be helpful to include an additional condition just to avoid any ambiguity, that no wind turbines of any form shall be erected without prior written consent of the local planning authority. Thank you.
Are we agreed on that? Thank you very much. And going back to that revised recommendation with the additions that have just been discussed, can I see those members in favour of the officer's recommendation that permission be granted?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
And those against?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
It looks then, ladies and gentlemen, as though permission is granted. Thank you, thank you very much for your time and have a safe journey home. Oh, sorry, sorry, before we rush away, there is recommendation B on page 71. Permission should be refused if the recommendation, the conditions on recommendation A are not met. Are we agreed on recommendation B? Thank you very much. Have a safe journey home.